Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our June 6, 2022 Select Board Meeting. We are out of executive session and we are in regular session at 7:00 PM. And could you all join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, we have some very special guests with us from the high school, the robotics team, who just competed at the World Championship Competition. And you guys competed against 20,000 teams, is that correct? Is that right? No?
Sort of.
Sort of. Well, why don't you guys come up and tell us about us?
Who's counting?
Who's counting?
Thank you for having us.
Yes, very exciting. You guys have been together since 6th grade, is that right?
Yeah, so we all started in middle school and have carried way into high school.
Excellent. So what did you guys build for your competition?
So this is our robot. Oh, wait. Speak into the mic.
I'll just lift this stuff up. You want to switch on?
Yeah. So this is our robot for the competition this year, the 2021-2022 season. We compete in a league called Vex Robotics, and that's the World Championship we went to. We didn't directly compete against 20,000 teams, but there's 20,000 Vex teams across the whole world, so it was sort of like that. Not directly. I mean, probably between the four competitions, we only competed against like 320 teams that are different. Sounds about right. So our robot this year, well, so the game this year, which is like the competition each year, focused on these mobile goals and rings that you had to place on top of the poles on the mobile goals. So our robot can lift up mobile goals on each side and intake rings to dump on that side.
Do we want to demonstrate?
Yeah, we could show it. Basically, we just have to lift these up and balance them on like a seesaw thing and then take these purple pringles and put them on these poles.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we can show the robot doing that.
We funnel the rings through this conveyor belt we have right here, and it's pretty reliable, 90 so percent accurate.
Should I run the program?
Yeah, just put it on the ground.
Okay. Do you want to put it on the ground instead of up here, so that it doesn't fall off the table?
Do you want to do it in the center?
There you go.
Is the program on?
The program is not on. Tell me when I can. Okay. You'll also notice the lifts go down. So it doesn't matter where they start, they go to the correct position. See it? That automatically closes.
Oh, yeah, we use distance sensors on our lifts to basically auto-activate them to keep them closed, so you don't actually have to push them.
Yeah, you press a button. Automatically. And then if we lift this up, and the ring's gone. And that took us almost a whole year to get right, because in the beginning, they'd go on like half the time. Well, we can also lift this up. Right? Yay! You want to press it?
Everybody can stand up.
So, yeah, the beginning, they went on like half the time, and now they go on all the time, which is really cool.
That's excellent. And you guys won two different design awards?
Yeah, so we attended a total of four competitions. One in November at the high school, then our second one was at Fankraft High School. Our third one was the Southern New England Regional Championships at Framingham Walsh Middle School. And then our final competition was in Dallas, Texas, at the International Competition.
So what are your roles, like the programmers, designers, mechanical engineers, project managers? Do you guys like all share roles, or do you all have very specific roles?
Yeah, so each one of us has an overall role, but something that we specialize in. So for me, I specialize in the documentation of everything, and that's where I tend to spend most of my time, but I also assist with building when needed.
Is that also as a mission to the project?
Yes, yes.
That got the design awards. That's what the design awards are for.
We won two design awards across the season, thanks to Zoe's notebook.
They helped a lot.
Oh, other thing, I'm the programmer. So, yeah, lots of programming. I won't get into the details, but we did get best programming at the Southern New England Championship, which is this thing. So, yeah. It was cool. Lots of things that you normally wouldn't learn until like your third year of college, which I think is, you know, it's great that there's an opportunity to like learn advanced stuff in high school.
Yeah, so then I assist with building and design along with Luke, who's our driver, and Keenan, who's not here, he also builds with me. And then between me and Keenan, we also sometimes touch the code and mess it up, so that Dan can fix it later. And then Carolyn and Anusri joined the team to help out with our shipping and just building stuff to get to Worlds and basically all of that.
It was very helpful building stuff, too.
That's awesome.
And where do you build? And so this all came out of the program at the middle school and the high school and those resources?
Yeah, so we all, or most of us started at the middle school, except Anusri and Carolyn.
No, Carolyn did.
Carolyn at Anusri started as a freshman, but the rest of us, we all started in middle school, and that's how we, or most of us met and then became teammates. And then from there, when we got into high school, we kept the same team and we continued to build and program and document, and that's how we got here today.
And is there somebody in the high school that helps you do all this?
That is lovely Mr. Motherware, our coach.
There you go.
How long does this robot take to build? Is this like iterations over many years, or is this one that you did this year?
So every year, the game changes, and we start at the beginning of the season in September, designing and building an entirely new robot. This year, after a regional competition, which is the one we qualified for Worlds on, we actually completely rebuilt our robot and came up with this one, which is uncommon.
Yeah, this was about eight weeks. We had to build this entire thing.
You know it has a name.
An unofficial name of Betty. Because of the hood we have here, it looks like a bonnet, so.
So what happens to Betty after, now? Does she go into retirement?
She'll stay for about around of, like around a year, and then basically we'll disassemble it after that.
A week. Like by the end of this year.
All right, yeah, we'll disassemble. What's for not using it anymore?
But that's school year, but eventually we'll have to disassemble it.
Did you guys have to fundraise, or how did that kind of work?
I think the high school has a budget for the robotics program.
But we also fundraise to get to the competition with travel expenses.
May I ask what years you're in and your name? I think it'd be nice to all that you would tell us your names.
Okay. I'm Daniel Mittelman. I'm senior now, North Andover High School alumni, I guess.
Where are you going to school?
That's my next question.
Georgia Tech for Computer Science.
Very good, nice school.
My name is Jonathan Hale. I'm a junior, soon to be senior.
I'm Zoe Levin. I am a junior, soon to be senior.
I'm Luke Ralph. I'm a junior, soon to be senior.
I'm Anusri Chitinnani. I'm a senior, just graduated. I'm also going to Georgia Tech for Computer Science.
I'm Carolyn. I'm a senior going into college. I'm going to Leslie University for Education.
Very good. I knew you would all have great stories, that's why I had to ask.
Hi.
And where are you going?
A question came up about how we fund the program. The students that take robotics take a class or the club. Some of them are in class and club. There's a budget at the high school that funds part of that, and then we form partnerships with industry. And we've been fortunate the last several years to get a grant from, a participation grant from Snyder Electric. So we, the engineers come and judge and mentor at the competition, and then they also give us some funding to help with running the program. And we have, we do have somebody with us here today, Harris, Harris Karimovitch.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you. So Harris is one of the engineers. He comes every year to judge, and we had a field trip a few years ago. We haven't been since COVID started, but the kids get to go over and see what happens at Snyder, and then the judges come and help facilitate judging at the contest.
So what is 8568? Is that just a number that was assigned to you, or does that have some meaning?
So, yeah, that's our team. 8568 is the North Andover Robotics Club. It's what our team's registered to, and A is the specific team we are. So there's eight, there were eight North Andover teams this year on the club, seven, something like that, and so each team has a letter associated.
But you didn't get the memo.
Oh, no, so actually, that's our uniform, so Luke is the driver.
I'm just teasing you, Luke.
But each school has a different license plate number, and they all, everyone at that school has that same license plate number, and they'll carry that on throughout their robotics career.
Well, we're so very proud of all of you. You've worked very hard. What an exciting field to be so good in. I wouldn't even know where to begin. I've never been a big thing with those, what was that, what, erector sets when I was a kid? My brothers had them, but.
Erectus down steroids.
My kids would love to come play with me.
Well, go see. Go see Mike, right? And thank you for that, and obviously Snyder and the other sponsors involved, there's a lot of, a lot of work that goes into it, but just the way this thing has grown over the years, it's been around 10 years? I'm trying to think about how long. I've been here since 2005. We started.
Something can happen with community partnerships.
That's right. That's right. Yeah, no, very good. If you, if you happen to watch the graduation online, Anusri made a couple of comments about her, how the visit to Snyder Electric and being in contact with the engineers impacted her decision to pursue engineering.
And you talked about guiding robots through the cafeteria, right?
Were you the salutatorian?
Salutator's name was.
That was me. I also talked about robotics.
And you're both going to Georgia Tech, that's awesome.
I also talked about robotics at the end, though.
That's amazing. Thank you.
Your families must be very proud. Congratulations to all of you. I know, it takes a ton of hard work and dedication, and this is the fruits of your labor.
Thanks for sharing it with us.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. I just have a quick certificate of recognition for you guys. It says Robotics Team 8568A, in recognition of winning an award at the Vex Robotics World Championship 2022 held in Dallas, Texas. Team 8568A consists of Luke Ralph, Daniel Mittelman, Zoe Levin, Keon Goslin, and Jonathan Hale, who qualified by being a top skills contender against the clock and receiving, I think, award for excellence in the programming. Congratulations on the behalf of North Andover to the team for placing 75th out of 20,000 teams worldwide. That's where I got the 20,000.
Team leader.
Again, thank you for having us.
Can we take a picture with you guys? Real quick? With all your stuff?
Do you want to go that way, or let them come this way? I don't know. They're mostly tall, but they're mostly neat.
We'll just have the final. Go have you guys in the middle.
Okay, Luke, yeah, you vote in the middle. I'm running. I don't know.
Yes, you come too.
You get Betty. You get Betty. You get Betty. You get Betty. There we go. Got everybody in? Nice.
We're not, we're not, we're not doing.
Thank you.
There you go.
Thank you for coming, especially those of you who are fragile.
The new competition gets revealed at the championships. They're already prototyping how to shoot frisbees for next year. It's like disc golf. So our first tournament next year at the high school will be November 18.
We're mentors. Fabulous. I love it.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Phone this for next year. All right, we can't wait to see you next year.
That's great. That's awesome. That's one of the best parts, isn't it? Getting to see what our young, young kids are doing. All right, we will move on to any public comment. Then we will move on to our public hearing for Math Electric to install, or Doing Business National Grid to install underground conduit at Brentwood, so I'll take a motion.
Before you do that, can I just read an email that we got recently? Oh, yeah, never mind, it's already been communicated. Sorry. Never mind.
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so I'll take a motion for the public hearing. I move that we open the public hearing for the petition of National Grid to install underground conduits on Brentwood Circle.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Hi. Do we have somebody here from National Grid?
Good evening. My name's Chris Wellington. I'm a program manager for National Grid for the replacement of underground cable, and the project that we have before you tonight is we have direct buried underground cable that is at end of life, and so the project is to replace that cable, and we'll be installing new conduit around Brentwood Circle. There are some sections that already have had conduit installed. We were there last year installing a few sections, and now we're going to finish the street. So the method that we're using for this portion of the project will be directional drilling. So the benefit for everybody involved for directional drilling is that it's much less intrusive on the property and the right of way. So we drill from location to location, which is usually from a transformer to maybe a pull box that we may need to be able to make up the connections, and we work our way around the development. So we are looking to install the new conduit off edge of curb around the outside edge of the development. We'll be starting at right near House 61, and then we'll continue around the left side of the circle till we get around to the other side, which is House 295. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Usually it comes up about restoration, so when we do dig a pit, and we do need to dig a pit in front of a transformer to make access into the transformer to put the conduits in, we'll restore it with loom and seed and restore it as best we can, the way it was before we got there. We can't put sod in, but we can do loom and seed.
Thank you. Any questions?
What's the distance you're going to be drilling, and when does it start and what's the duration expected to be?
So I expect to start probably early August, and I expect the project to last about two to three weeks before we're done. And the distance is about 2,000 feet, if I remember correctly, from point A to point B for the entirety of the project.
Okay. So pretty much the month of August, give or take a week.
Yeah, pretty much we'll be there in the month. The date may shift, and if it does, I'll send out a notification to all the residents prior to us getting there, at least two to three weeks ahead of time. We don't expect any outages for this because of the way that the project had been replaced in the past, we have a redundant loop through the neighborhood, and we're able to do all the switching and bring online the new cable as we go, so it shouldn't be a problem.
And any damaged property or any property that needs to be maybe not directionally drilled or something will be restored to its original state?
Yeah, any, if you have any issues or anybody has an issue, the town or residents, they can reach out to me. I have my card, and my information will be on the letter that gets sent out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? No? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I'll take a motion to.
Just to amend and see if there's any public comment.
Any public comment on this topic?
Hi, how are you?
Yeah, you can come up to the podium.
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Gill, and I live at 96 Brentwood Circle, so we're on the opposite side from where the work's being done. A few years back, the town was good enough to completely repave Brentwood Circle, and it looks great. My concern is what happens to the road? And if we're not happy with the road, I know Mr. Wellington's here, and he said he'll leave his number. How do we go about, what's the recourse we have in case, you know, we're unhappy? Let me preface that also by saying we just put in a new driveway, so I'm a little concerned. Thank you.
So driveways, we'll be drilling, so we are not planning to dig up any driveways, so we won't be on your side of the street, so we won't be doing any damage that we know of to a driveway. The only time that we would have to maybe dig in a driveway is if there's a utility underneath the driveway, and if we cross it, we always like to use a vector truck to suck the soil out so we can see the actual crossing when we drill. Very unusual to have a utility in a driveway, but it may happen. If it does, we'll replace the entire end of the driveway, you know, at our cost and to the customer satisfaction as best that we can. For the roadways, we expect to be off edge of pavement. If we do have to be out in the roadway because of congestion with other utilities, we've spoken with engineering for the town, and we'll make restoration and we'll infrared the patches if we have to, to make sure that they blend in well, and if they don't hold up over time, we'll come back and fix it.
Madam Chair, we will have a bond for the project as well as part of the transparent opening.
And of course, any residents can reach out to us, too, if you have any concerns.
And they can reach out to us as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Okay, and I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing for the petition of National Grid to install underground conduits on Brentwood Circle.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? I, okay, we're out of the public hearing. Can we just take it out of order, the vote for this? It will be item A on the, under new business, and I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request from National Grid to install underground electrical conduits on Brentwood Circle as, as written up in their design.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Passes 5-0. Thank you guys so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to governmental reports, and we have a presentation from Dan Beckley, our staff planner, on the MBR TA Shelter Location and Design. Do we have Dan?
I'm here. Andrew's going to give the intro.
Okay, and Andrew, too.
I'll be brief with my comments. Andrew Shapiro, Director of Community and Economic Development, for the record. So first, I wanted to start by just recognizing Dan. I don't know if everybody knows, but Dan is going to probably be leaving us by the end of the month as our staff planner, so we're in the process right now of searching for a new staff planner, but I wanted to take a minute just to recognize all the hard work that he's done over the course of the better part of two years for the town, for the Community Development Division, the work that I do, the work that our Planning Director, Gene Enright, does. Among the many things he's done, he's worked on the watershed plan update, developing a small cell wireless policy that you all now oversee, developing our complete streets policy and helping to implement, develop an implementation plan for that. He worked alongside us on the Route 125 corridor study, and then he's recently put in for some grants, so hopefully we'll continue to see the benefits of all Dan's great work in the near future. He put in for a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant to undertake a, an inventory of our urban street trees and to develop a plan for planting additional street trees throughout the town, also as, as well as a Mass Trails Grant to continue the work we've been doing and planning a Phase 1 of our rail trail. And he's also worked very closely with local boards and commissions, including the Master Plan Implementation Committee and staffing the CPC. So he's been indispensable. I just really want to thank Dan for all his hard work, and this will be sort of a little going out the bank with a little more information he's done for us on this. But before we jump into his presentation, I just really wanted to quickly also go over some of the context for what he's going to be discussing this evening. I don't know if you all are aware, but I am the Towns Representative to the Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board. And so basically, just a couple updates on where the MBR TA stands and what they're trying to do. Number one, they're trying to shift away right now from a flag-down service, so anybody can just, anywhere along a route, sort of flag down a bus and get on, kind of like you're hailing a taxi, except you're hailing a bus. And they're trying to transition away from that into more of a traditional sort of formalized set of stops with, in some cases, bus shelters. So Dan's going to go into a little more detail on what those bus shelters could look like, where they might go. We're trying to think a little bit ahead, because there's opportunities in the future to potentially utilize grant funding to procure some of those bus shelters, install some of those bus shelters. So we just wanted to put that out there to you guys as information and to get a little bit of feedback if you were able to provide some, or we could certainly discuss it at a future date as well. But just a couple more updates on the MBR TA. I don't know if everybody's aware, but on the 1st of March of this year, the MBR TA went fare-free, so nobody has to pay anything in order to ride an MBR TA bus. And since then, they have seen a market increase in ridership across both major business lines. Fixed route ridership increased 42.5% from February to March and 44.9% from February to April. Peritransit ridership increased 38.3% from February to March and 31.1% from February to April. Now, mind you, this is system-wide. I don't have the numbers specific to North Andover, and I can certainly get that information to you as a follow-up, but just to give some context on sort of the, the success of the fare-free transition. I'll also mention that they're in the position, they're in the possession of 500 poles for bus stop signage to be deployed across the service area, area. So they're going to coordinate with cities and towns on that initiative, and I realize this is like a million miles away, but these little red sort of beacons are what they're going to post as sort of their visual signal for what a bus stop would be, and that's going to be in addition to bus shelters they would implement. And they're also undergoing a rebrand where they're going to start to try to make their buses a little more visual for people as well. And they're done enough, you know, a great deal of, of community outreach and focus groups and discussions amongst different members of their boards and commissions and their employees. So hopefully, you'll see more information about that in the coming months. But with that, I will go ahead and toss it over to Dan, and he'll go through his presentation for you.
Thanks, Andrew.
Dan, are you able to share it on your own?
Yeah, I can share it on my end. Thank you. Yep, so as Andrew said, I'm Dan Beckley, I'm the staff planner, and Community and Economic Development and Planning Department have been looking at bus shelters with the changes at the MBR TA that he had mentioned. So getting into this a little further, bus shelters play a sort of key role in public transit. They just, they make it more attractive and appealing and convenient when you have bus shelters, especially if they have benches or if they're fully covered from, protected from the elements. You get additional increases in ridership, so there's potential to compound on the increases they're seeing with, you know, the free, the free, the fare-free buses that they're running now. And so MBR TA had approached us when they were applying for a grant for 18 bus shelters in Haverhill and probably Lawrence. Havrell and probably Lawrence, I don't remember the other city, and had proposed bus shelters, a couple downtown, one by Heritage Green and one by Panera Bread Ace Hardware, which they had said were some of the highest ridership areas in town. Looking at where people locally have seen, a lot of people boarding the buses, we also proposed one at the middle school. But taking into consideration the sort of planning aspects of this, we wanted to evaluate further on, you know, potential locations and design. The pictures you see here are the typical MVR TA bus shelters. They're glass metal, about twelve feet wide, four feet deep. And yeah, so that's why we're here, is to kind of discuss design and location and get some input. So the highest ridership location is downtown. A lot of people get on in front of Town Hall and in front of First and Main. There's existing seating there that makes this an attractive place and sort of a de facto bus stop. And that is wonderful. There are however, you know, because there is not empty space in these areas, there's an issue with adding a bus shelter there. And so there's a lot to consider in terms of where we want to put a bus shelter, where there's room to put a bus shelter. And also with the sort of historic elements downtown, the sidewalks and Town Hall, there's certainly a consideration of aesthetics. And additionally, you know, looking further down the road with the Downtown Improvement Master Plan, you know, there's certainly going to be wider sidewalks with more room for these things. But currently, there's probably going to be more need to work with the budding property owners as you're pushing these things towards like the edge of the sidewalk and stuff like that. There's potential for it to be outside of the right of way. And so these are a couple of locations we had looked at where there's sort of existing bump outs from the sidewalk and where people typically get on. But as you can see, again, there's seating there, there's gardens, lampposts, and so issues to consider. Additionally, if we look at less central locations, there's wider sidewalks in front of Duncan and there's this little parklet over by Bank of America. We still get the same considerations of are we, what are we replacing if we put something there? The need to work with the budding property owners as well as if we're, you know, looking at permanent bus stops, do we want them decentralized? You know, it's certainly not ideal, especially when people are sort of using other benches as de facto bus shelters. But this is the prime, one of the primary locations we're looking is downtown. Then there's the middle school. There's obvious options at the driveway entrances on Main Street. And that's easy enough. That's town land. There aren't really nearby abutters on that side of the street. However, heading into downtown on the opposite side of the street, there's certainly more property conflicts that would need to be considered. There's a lot of room within the right of way near where Park Street and Main Street intersect, but that's also abutting someone's yard. So it's certainly, again, need to discuss with the abutters. Need to consider what we want these to look like, how big they should be and what types of amenities we want to provide. And there's potential opportunities to put it on the other side of Park Street, but you'd really want more curbs that sidewalk, define it better or create more space where a bus shelter would appropriately fit in. So middle school side of the street, easy enough. The other side, discuss. Heritage Green has a really high level of bus ridership. The issue is it's along Route 125. There's not a ton of room. Would likely have to work with Mast dot. There is however, the potential to have people picked up within the Heritage Green complex. There's, would be a need to discuss that more with MVR TA and of course, get permission from Heritage Green. However, having bus shelters where people live makes riding the bus much more convenient. It makes it attractive to people who, you know, might drive their car anyways. When we're considering transit, we're not just looking to serve the people who don't have access to a car, but you know, enable more people to use a more sustainable way of getting around. Especially adding this level of convenience is really hopeful when we're looking at where exactly we want to place shelters. So there's potential there and it also eliminates the need to cross 125, which would be a huge safety issue if we placed shelters along 125. That said, that was likely what MVR TA's main consideration was, was having them in, you know, empty areas near Heritage Green. There's certainly areas along the frontage. They have existing benches there where people likely get on the bus. Opposite side of the street, whole nother issue. And so again, this would be something we need to talk to MVR TA, Mast dot and Heritage Green about. Even if we have it along the frontage, it's still on Heritage Green's property and they would need to approve that. One of the last, the last location that MVR TA had suggested was Panera Bread Ace Hardware. It's, you know, high level of ridership for access to stores and things like that. A lot of people coming from Heritage Green to this location. Along the street, there's really not a lot of room and on the street, the side of the street that the stores are on, there's no sidewalk, which creates a huge safety issue. And so again, in looking at safety and convenience, existing infrastructure, it would be a great opportunity to have the transit stop within the plaza. That way you only need one stop. You can just turn in and out. There would be the need to consider, you know, is there enough, is the sufficient room for a bus to turn around within the parking lot? As well as coordinating with the property owners to see if that is something that they support. But having bus shelters within there, you have the benefit of existing awnings, having, you know, door to door transit. It's very beneficial. If we were looking at the street, there is room along the frontage, but would require, you know, pedestrian infrastructure to make it safe as well as accessible for wheelchair users. Across the street, there is sidewalk, but same issue of needing safety for crossing as well as finding an appropriate location for it. With all that said, you know, location is one discussion, design, aesthetics, it's another key part of this discussion. So bus shelters can look like all sorts of things. In the top left, we have the standard MVR TA shelter, which I believe was around fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars per shelter. So they're certainly not cheap. You also need room on the sidewalk for clearance for ADA compliance. Where, you know, New England, so we, it's better to have shelters that aren't just an awning, but have sides to, you know, protect you from snow, elements, wind, things like that. MVR TA definitely prefer, prefers to have advertising on their shelters because it helps support operations and maintenance. That said, there's also a discussion of who's going to do that operation and maintenance. So requires coordination with DPW. But getting back to design, you know, there's consideration, there's options for, you know, having different looks in different districts of town. Perhaps in like downtown redesigns, we maybe want to consider something that's more of a parklet and integrated into that. Or on the bottom left, you have what Cape Cod's Regional Transit Authority, Authority Designs look like. Those are, you know, intended to appear more, you know, reflect local designs. There is however, further concerns about, you know, having a sort of fully enclosed sheltered structure. So all things we want to consider, discuss and get your input on. So first among next steps is getting input from you. Then where we would move on towards engaging business and property owners, working with MVR TA and hopefully pursuing funding and implementing some of these steps while the MVR TA is still fare free to help to, you know, drive that traffic and encourage people to ride the bus. So thank you all and we welcome your questions.
Thank you, Dan, very much. Does anybody have any questions?
Is there still a stop down at the West Mill? Or has that been lifted now? Or is that no longer there? There was a stop at one point where that went direct into Boston at West Mill?
Yeah, that is actually no longer active. So there's, there's no longer a commuter bus service right now going from North Andover to Boston and vice versa at the moment. And that's due, mainly due to a lack of demand. And I mean, I would be, I would encourage anybody who might be watching this at home, if, if they are missing that commuter rail service, I mean, excuse me, commuter bus service, you know, to please contact the town or the MVR TA directly because certainly if there is demand, we want to get that up, back up and running.
I, I would think there would be now that with the price of gas and this is free, right, to go to North Andover to Boston is pretty.
Partly because of COVID too?
So it was shut down during COVID and I did feel the call from the administrator of the MVR TA and he let me know that they would not be, I think they brought it back up for a certain period of time and then they just, they were getting like literally one rider. And I think part of the reason, up until recently at least, and this might have been prior to their huge spike in gas that you just referenced, Sleckman Valencourt, is that you have the hybrid work environment. So a lot of people are still commuting into Boston, but maybe they're more willing to drive because they're only doing it twice or three times per week as opposed to five times every week. So it's hard to say what the, what the pattern will be going forward. It'll be interesting to see how it unfolds. But I think what I took from the MRT administrator is that they'd be willing to revamp it if in fact there was a demand that, that rose. And I don't know that that service in particular would end up remaining free. I think the regular sort of fixed route service throughout the system is going to remain free. I don't, I don't know if commuter rail, excuse me, commuter bus service would, would be free.
What's the timeframe generally for this that we're talking about?
Dan, you want to take that or do you want me to take it?
Say a timeframe?
Yeah.
Roughly, yeah.
Yep. So the funding mechanism that MVR TA used for their, the bus shelters that they had applied for grant funding for, it's a relatively new grant, but it usually has two rounds a year. So next opportunity would be in, I believe, December if we use that grant. There are however, other opportunities, none that we have been actively pursuing. But next obvious opportunity is December. I believe that they don't announce that until July. So if we were following that timeline, it would be implemented next summer. As I said, you know, it would be great to have something up by, before March 2024 when they're ending the fare free service. But there's definitely other options for funding that can be looked at.
And I'll just add to that, I, you know, I think that they're going to be on roll, you know, rolling out the, the bus stops. So like the poles with the visual signage about, here's a bus stop. I think they're looking to roll that out this year. So they'll be working with cities and towns this year to, to roll that out. And just on the fare free service, yes, it is a two-year pilot, so to speak, funded through ARPA. But I think, you know, if it's very successful, I think the, the, the system is going to do everything it can to remain fare free. I don't have the figure in front of me, but there's a certain amount of inefficiency that's built into the fare system. So in other words, if, you know, if you pay a dollar for a fare, something like, and I'm misquoting this, but some generous percentage of that dollar, let's call it at least sixty cents, goes towards the maintenance of the fare system itself. So it's, it's a highly inefficient system is what they've discovered and they have found that, you know, ridership is actually more benefited from the, the fare free service.
Interesting.
Let me ask you, so what would the, what would the route be? It appears as though it's just kind of a little bit around town. Where does it go from?
I think right now, I think right now there's, the, the primary routes coming out of Havrell onto Route 125 and then returning. We have been having discussions with Amazon and the MRT stat themselves about establishing a route that would be going into the Amazon site. And then what we'd like to do is continue service through town, hooking around to, you know, past the senior center on Sutton Street, stopping downtown at the corner of Main Street and continuing on to the Lawrence MBTA station. Because I think the best thing we can possibly do is connect regional employers, housing and our downtown to commuter rail service through the local bus service.
I'm just a little surprised that it doesn't go down to where the, you know, some of the grocery stores are.
Yeah, and I think it does. I, I, there is a, there is a. Yeah, there is a route that. There is a route that goes downtown and to one, to Route 114 as well, I believe.
Mark about it and then it does it all again, yep.
So how many approximately stops are there in North Andover? And why were these four locations chosen? Were these the ones that we see the highest amount, number of ridership coming on?
Yeah, we did. And Dan, maybe you want to speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so the two downtown options, Heritage Green and the Panera Bread Ace Hardware one were recommended by MVR TA as where they see the highest ridership. Gene Enright had indicated that she's seen a lot of people get on and off at the middle school. And so that was, she had recommended that one as well. That said, I think long term, they are definitely interested in having more stops just for this one grant. They had identified those as the highest ridership locations.
Yeah, the ones that I always see is definitely at Rockies is always folks sitting on the rock wall there waiting for the bus and then downtown. Yeah, and just to answer your question, I don't think a bus could actually functionally turn around in that parking lot. Especially, yeah, it's very tight in there and especially if it's busy in there, it'll take, take a, so it would have to be a street. It would have to stay on the street. But I would like to see something there because definitely I see a lot of people sitting on that rock wall waiting for the, the bus to come by. And I think it would be nice to have a, you know, something that's a little more aesthetic and comfortable for them to wait in, especially on rainy days.
Cover all four of these locations?
What was that?
Would the grant cover all four locations?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's a flexible amount, but I, I think especially if it was coming from MVR TA, they'd be willing to fund higher amounts and it would probably be rolled in with other towns, which is how they were doing it this time. And I would, I think that would be the best approach if we applied with MVR TA. But I, I believe the max amount is something like $200,000 and that would be more than sufficient.
And in this past round that we, we unfortunately did not participate in, but we wanted to, you know, give a little more thought to how we'd want to think about this, hence the process we're going through right now. I think Amesbury got two stops and the rest of the stops went to Lawrence. And I think Lawrence got something like fifteen stops. So they were able to apply for a generous amount of funding to cover a lot of bus shelters.
And if we apply with MVR TA, would we have some say in the design aspects of it? I just, I'm particularly thinking of downtown and with the downtown revitalization and all of that coming together.
Yeah, I think, I think the MRT wants to work with us on design. I don't think there's any strict, you know, requirement that we go with their standard bus shelter design. I think they'll work with us depending on, you know, what the location might call for, what the public might want based on that.
That brings me to my point. I assume there will be opportunity for more public input, maybe especially when it comes to design and things like that. When I think about, again, same as Mr. Valencourt, the parking lot by Panera, it's like not going to happen. And I actually also am a little hesitant that right by the middle school is a great idea. I think overall we need these. I think it's, you know, will be a great addition to our community, but I have a middle schooler and I'm just not so sure that they need someplace to hang out and make bad decisions.
Nothing's stopping them from getting on the bus there.
Are you talking about them getting on the bus or just hanging out?
I'm just talking about hanging out at the bus shelter.
Like another place to congregate.
Another, just that did cross my mind that maybe someplace with me, I was looking at just the covered shelter, maybe no seating, no sides, you know, just minimize sort of the opportunity for, I don't know, graffiti and things like that. Those are just immediate thoughts that cross my mind.
We could certainly also engage the school administration to see if they have any thoughts as to that being a. thoughts as to that being, you know, a red flag, bad idea right off the bat. And, and Dan, I do think that, you know, the next, one of the next steps on your list in your presentation was to do some community outreach. So we'll, we'll certainly move forward on that. But we wanted to make you all aware of this process before we had sort of embarked fully on that.
Appreciate all of the effort and Dan, I just want to say a quick thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you.
And this is exciting. I'm looking forward to how it progresses.
Thank you both for all your hard work. And Dan, thank you and we wish you nothing but the best on your next adventure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks all.
Appreciate it.
This one's bad. It'll be out.
It's pretty though. All right, we are going to move on to licensing. So I'll take a motion to enter into licensing.
Moved open a meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Over to you.
Okay, we've just got a couple items tonight. First is application of Yosa Yanis of psychic readings for a fortune teller license at 163 Turnpike Street. Do we have someone to speak to that? Please go forward.
Hello, how are you all doing today?
And could you just introduce yourself for the record?
Sorry. My name is, my name is Joshua Yanis. It's very nice to meet you all here. I am taking, taking new ownership of psychic readings of North Andover. I do tarot card readings, psychic readings, energy readings, try to get people onto the right path.
The existing building on the corner of?
Correct. Of 114 and, 114 and 133.
Yeah.
No, I might be, I might be wrong, but don't the present people live there as well?
Yep, yep. So, oh, that's how that works, okay. Yep, so I, my, my mom is the one that does the psychic readings. She does, she does the psychic readings. I'm just overseeing everything.
Okay, and so that they would remain in the same building?
Correct.
But you're just going to be the manager or?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions from the committee?
You guys have been there for a long time.
Yeah.
Yes, we have, a very long time.
How many years?
Been there since 2008, I believe. 2008 to now is 10.
14 years.
14 years, yeah.
Something like that.
That's amazing.
That's great.
It is amazing. It seems like that year comes up really quick every year.
Every year.
It's like, can we just do that half a month?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of a license for psychic readings, the fortune tell license at 163 Turnpike Street.
One second.
Thank you. No other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Have a good day.
Thank you so much. It was an honor to be here tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, and now a stranger, no stranger to us at all, right? Application of Richard Green for a one-day entertainment license for the All-Star Baseball Day at Drummond Field on June 11th, 2022, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And I believe Mr. Green's here. And what are they going to do all day, these baseball All-Stars?
For the record, Rick Green, 357 Ray Street, representing North Andover Youth Baseball. So it's going to be a day of different baseball events. There'll be games that'll go on during the day. We're going to set up a fence, temporary fence, nothing high, but just to basically measure hit batted balls. And so there'll be contests throughout the day. There's going to be a DJ. I've already gone through the layout with Rick Gorman several times. We went through it tonight. So the DJ will be set up close to the youth center to get power out of there. We're going to have an ice cream truck that'll come in on Milk Street just for a short period of time. We're going to have a couple of gas grills that are either going to be set up on the first base foul territory of Drummond Field or they're going to be up in the shade towards the volleyball area, under the trees in the shade over there. And we're going to have another business will be there printing T-shirts. We're also going to run power out of the youth center for that. We have a couple of portable restrooms I ordered that I've organized with Rick. Those will be set up in the parking lot of the youth center. Those will be dropped off on Friday, picked up earlier next week. And obviously what goes along with this was the application for a block party. We've taken into accommodation what the fire department requested, which was to have an emergency lane. We had already spoken to some of the residents and we were going to let them in and out of their driveway. So we'll just, I'll get some traffic cones from work and we'll set up, we'll set up a lane closure. Really what we're going to focus on really is just the parking spaces right at Drummond Field. People will still have access to the playground. And I don't know that we really go till 10 o'clock. I'm, believe me, I'm going to push for a little bit earlier so I can take down the setup and get home. There'll be, you know, members of the board will be in and out all day with, with different teams. We're actually running a home run derby contest at Kyle Thomas Friday night and we'll move over to Drummond Field on that. So this is our, last year we kind of had this same event, but it was at Kyle Thomas. We went with a food truck down there. So we've moved over to Drummond Field because a lot of, we've switched league affiliations now. We're no longer with Little League. We're actually with Cal Ripken. So we run a 50-70 program, which Drummond Field allows us to do that. The other nice thing is that they get, the kids get to experience playing under the lights, so.
That's great.
So that's our plan of events. I am responsible probably for turning the lights off, pulling the lane closure down, whatever else needs to go on. I think we're, we're going to keep the restrooms closed at the youth center. And depending upon what's going at the youth center, there isn't much, but there might be actually painting on the basketball court, redoing that. So I'll work with Rick Gorman on that and we'll caution tape off areas that need to be protected. So I'll be in and out periodically during the day.
And weather, how are you controlling the weather? It gets about the only thing.
Fingers crossed.
Yeah, it looks like I've got everything else good.
And I've looked at the forecast and I see some showers coming into the PM, so I guess we'll play it by ear.
That works out well, then you can break down early.
That would be very nice of me.
Well, it's very well organized. There's, as you see in the packet, everything signed off and, you know, again, really, really great work. Any questions from the committee?
So I heard rumors of fireworks. Is that not happening, right? Okay.
I told them no.
Okay.
I told them no a long time ago.
Good.
But.
We've got fireworks planned.
Some people wanted to go through the process, but the realization is it wasn't going to happen, so.
It's a tight area for fireworks.
Yes. Tight area. I actually think Rick Gorman walked it with either the chief or the lieutenant. There's, there's issues over there. We, we understand that, so.
The town is going to have nice fireworks.
And I will look forward to those.
Yes, and they're going to be an extra special display this year for the 370 fit, so it'll be worth the wait.
That's all we need.
Right.
That's great.
After you sign off on the entertainment license, I'll approve the block party. I just didn't want to do it before you authorized the entertainment.
Okay.
Chair, I'll move approval.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great time, you and all the guests.
Thank you very much. If anyone has any problems, they know how to reach me.
We know where you are.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
No, thank you. We do a great job for this town, so.
Absolutely. Okay, and the last piece here is we have an application of James Dumas of Trinity Congressional Church for a one-day entertainment license on June 27th, 2022, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. and a request for a waiver of the licensing fee. Folks to speak to that.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jay Dumas, James, but everybody calls me Jay. Our pastor is with us tonight. This is Pastor Deborah Adams from the Trinitarian Congregational Church. And we started this summer concert series last year. I don't know if, I'm sure you all approved it last year. I don't know if you came to any of our concerts, but they were very, very successful and great and we decided to continue with them. It's one of the ways we make an outreach to the people in the community of North Andover. We find that we get a lot of neighbors that come. We recently had a block party where we fed probably 100 people. And everything we do is outreach, so it's free to everybody who comes. This year we're planning again, four concerts. As you know, we're a small church, I think you know, a very small church, and we have very tight, limited budgets. And that's why we're asking you to waive that fee of the $100 per concert. It's much easier for us to accomplish our missions when we can control the budgets. So that's our request. Last summer we averaged about 85 people coming to the concerts. A lot of neighbors came and it was just very successful. And it's something that we like to do for the community. Everyone involved, we advertise it townwide in various shops. We have one of the digital signs from the police department. We put that on Main Street when that's available. We put signs out at church. We use our constant contacts to get the word out to people. We print up flyers and put them in shops. So it's something we're doing for the whole town, really.
Good.
Who do you have lined up for your concerts?
This one is called the Backtrack Oldies Band. We try to have them to be toe-tapping types of concerts, so it's a lot of fun for everybody that comes, the children, the adults. Some of the people my age remember those oldies and there's a lot of those. But we do it on the side lawn at the church, right on Elm Street, and we have a good time. So if you grant us the license, then come on down. We'd love to see you there.
Well, sounds good to me.
It, it sounds really good to me. Madam Town Manager, do you think that that would cause a problem for other groups that now we would have to be waiving a lot more?
So I was just, what I was whispering to Laurie was, who sets the fee? And because it's different in different communities and here you do set the fee, so you do have the authority to waive it if you so choose. And you could do so under, you know, under each circumstance. It may make more sense in future years for you to consider applying for entertainment license generally rather than go for the one day. It would be less work since you're going to have to come back four times.
That was one of my questions.
Yeah, so we can work with you on that next year. If, I think in the long run it would just make more sense for them to handle it that way. And so I think it would be fair for you to waive it this year, knowing that we're going to be going into a different process.
I think that's a great idea and that's why, why I asked. But I didn't want us to all of a sudden open up a, a whole other situation that now we have to treat everybody fair.
Yeah.
We have waived in the past.
Right, for other organizations.
I'm sure you have.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you get the concept, right? Consistency and if you're doing multiple things like this, it helps. So I'm certainly supportive of that if there's a consensus among the.
Well, having said that, I would move that we waive for this year and next year, come back with a plan that's more.
I would like to just say one thing, though. There is a condition from the fire department.
Yes.
And it says the streets in and around the area are tight. Please have a plan in place for parking to ensure the fire EMS apparatus can maneuver in the event of an emergency.
Yes.
The parking lot at the church will be open and we're not planning on shutting down any
streets at all. The concert will be on the side lawn.
When you, you said the side, but you said it would be on Elm Street, but isn't that the front lawn?
The church is on 72 Elm Street.
Right.
And when you look at the church, to the right-hand side is our big lawn out there.
That one over there, okay. Circular driveway. Yes, no, I, I'm real, I'm very familiar with it, but okay. So I was confused because you said side, whereas the front door is on Elm. That's why I was a little confused by it. Okay, that sounds good. And you do have the parking lot?
Yes, we do.
On the back left-hand side.
Yes.
Facing the front door, yeah.
Just asking that they not block the streets.
We will not block any streets.
Yeah, yeah.
It's similar to how we have a worship service.
Same, yeah, correspond.
Right, exactly.
That's what it looked like to me. Okay, so a motion?
I made a motion with them.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a great event.
So just so you understand the process, so we'll see you next month.
You'll have to come back now, yes. Although there'll be three, there's three others after this.
We still could think about maybe just having you apply for one license and just do it one time for the next three.
For the next three?
Be much easier, yes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Contact you or say something.
Just give us a call.
I'll give you a call. We can do that. For the next three, we'll do it all as one.
Yes.
And you've waived the fee for all four?
Yes, but you would still have to come back for another meeting.
Just one more, though.
Yeah, but just one more.
But it was a delight to be here. You didn't see that robotic team.
You've got a good one.
About the shelters and the.
You've got a good one.
One of those young gentlemen on that team won our scholarship this year.
Oh, yeah, that's wonderful.
I was at scholarship night and so you. I was there as well. It was really fun.
Wow, all connected. Well, great, we'll have a first good event.
So have you waived the fee for?
Yes.
The whole year, this year?
Not yet. But we're going to fix that.
For this license?
And we're going to be back.
To fix for the three.
Now, I, I will tell you, this has come up at a previous meeting that in the town of the Andover, they have concerts, but then they let people dance too.
We danced at ours.
Oh, well, there you go.
Jay and I both danced and there are other people in congregation that dance, all were dancing. I think we had 15 or so people.
Not many.
Well, that would add to the fun, yes.
Great.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Sounds great, thank you.
Have a great evening. Thanks, Dan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Chair, you may have an older agenda?
No, we do have one more, right?
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure you didn't miss it, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. So, yeah, we got able to fit it under the deadlines, the application of Colleen Hamilton of the trustees of the reservation for a one-day wine and malt liquor license for Father's Day Bash on, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. on June 18th, 2022.
Yeah, sorry, there is a small discrepancy. The event would be on Sunday, June 19th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay.
Yeah. But my name's Colleen Hamilton. I'm the new engagement manager at Stevens Cool House and Gardens, a property owned and operated by the trustees of reservations. And so we are putting on a Father's Day Bash. We have a band called Cold Chocolate that will be performing and we have Notch Brewing as our beer vendor and Bond Me as our food truck vendor.
All.
And happy to answer any questions that you have.
I just want to clarify the application, if it's okay, Mr. Chair?
Please.
So because the application was put in for the 18th, the date of alcohol to be delivered and removed is listed as the 18th. So could you just clarify for me what the date of alcohol delivery and removal will now be?
Absolutely. Apologies for that.
That's okay.
It would be arrival and leaving on Sunday, June 19th.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. I'll reflect that in the notes, Laurie, on the file. Thank you.
And the band will be, I'm looking at the layout now. The band is located away from any residential, right?
That's correct. We have an event lawn on the backside of our property, and they'll be facing back towards our wooded area, away from any abutters.
As you know, there's a particular attuneness to that, sensitivity may be another word for it. But I think that is part of that good community relationship. And as you're stepping into the role, we've covered a lot of ground in the past few years. I think we've gotten to a pretty good point, obviously, with some changes in the configuration. So, we wanna, you know, keep that. And so, just maintaining sensitivity to that, to the sound and any other concerns of the neighbors, just makes the event feel more comfortable for everybody.
Absolutely.
In the community.
And the other thing that's been brought up in the past, and I didn't, you know, I didn't see it on here, but is the placement of the porta-johns not so close to the abutters as well?
Yes.
For obvious reasons?
Yeah. Um, I don't believe we have any porta-johns right now. So, with the historic home being reopened, we have two restrooms available there. And with our new Garden Gateway Center, we have two restrooms available there. So, I think those would serve as our primary restrooms. Yeah, yep.
That'd be good, that'd be good.
How many attendees do you expect?
Uh, we have our maximum capacity at a hundred and fifty attendees.
Have you already sold tickets? And what's the, just for the home audience?
Of course.
What's the price points?
Yeah, so for non-members, it would be twenty dollars. For members, it would be twelve dollars. And we have sold, I checked today, a hundred and twenty-one tickets so far. So, yeah, yeah, very exciting.
That's great.
Yeah.
Now, because it's a Father's Day celebration, what about for children?
Yeah, so Cold Chocolate kind of speaks to all ages with their music. And then, I also, my background is in environmental education, so we'll have a couple of different activities that kids can participate in so that the parents can enjoy their time as well.
And those tickets are twelve dollars for the children?
Uh, children under two are two dollars, and then I believe the children tickets are five dollars.
Okay, that's great.
From twelve and under, yep.
Get them while they're young.
Exactly.
And, Mr. Chair, the police are recommending a detail just to the na, due to the nature of the sale of the beverages.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's fair.
Great.
I think that's fair. Any other comments from?
No, good luck with your new job.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It's been a very warm welcome to North Andover over. I've been here about two months now, and it's been great. I've loved getting to meet a lot of our different community relationships.
That's great.
Have you reached out to the neighbors?
I have, yes, yep. I've met the majority of the neighbors. And then, one of my first roles was during Bloom Fest, we did a community day. So, I reached out to a lot of different community members and was able to set up some face-to-face meetings with some people through that as well.
That's great.
Yeah.
Goes a long way.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, we appreciate that.
Yeah, of course.
With that, I'll hear a motion.
Chair, we'll just let Board acting, the Licensing Commission has approved the application for Colleen Hamilton of the trustees of the reservation for a one-day wine and malt license for a Father's Day Bash from five to eight PM on June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a great event.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much. I enjoyed meeting all of you, and I look forward to working together in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, and that now covers our licensing agenda. So, we can...
I move that we close the meeting of the North Andover Licensing Commission.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Vote to ratify the contract between the town with Andover and Police Chief Gray out of order.
Why?
He looks a little sad back there and wants to go home, I think. It is eight o'clock.
I don't understand. He doesn't wanna stay for all of us.
We'd have been better off just waiting.
Of course.
In case anybody knows, he is smiling.
I can't really see him, actually, so, of course we can.
He's on the scene, even in the middle of the night, if he has to be.
So, we will jump to item E on our new business to talk about our new contract with our police chief.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, Chief Gray's contract is expiring on June thirtieth. This would be a three-year term commencing on July first of two thousand twenty-two. Some of the new terms would include implementation of the Quinn Bill, which would mirror the unions that we previously have approved over the last few meetings, implementation of the non-represented step program, which is part of the fiscal year twenty-three budget initiative that was approved at town meeting, implementation of a thirteen-dollar clothing allowance, increase the deferred compensation, a new accreditation stipend, a vacation buyback, and the ability to use administrative days to teach at the academy and for other professional development purposes. This contract achieves two goals that we were aiming for. One is to make certain that the chief is making as much as his comparable chiefs in our surrounding communities. Really important for us to do that for retention purposes. And two, to maintain the sufficient salary gap between the lieutenants and the chief. And as you know, as we have been negotiating with different units and bringing them up to where they should be compensated, that does sometimes create a less room in between. So, we were able to fix that as well. We had a very positive negotiation, and I am very appreciative of your support of this contract.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments? Well, we'll see how the vote goes, but I'm sure it's fine. We're glad to have you.
We'll, the Select Board approve the contract between the town of North Andover and Police Chief Charles Gray for a term of July first, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pro five.
Thank you very much. Sincerely, it's been an honor so far. And like Melissa said, we had a great, a great discussion about this whole thing, and I'm very appreciative of her staff and herself for the way we just went about it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for all that you do for the town. We appreciate it.
Have a good night.
We're very lucky to have them. Just don't tell them too much, once a week.
All right, we'll go back to item B for a reappointment of Lynn Savage as our town accountant.
This is an, do we, an annual appointment? Three, every three years, thank you. This is a three-year appointment. We have a lot of appointments coming up in June, obviously. But we wanted to make sure we got this one, this one done. And so, as you know, Lynn does serve as both finance director and town accountant. The board is responsible for appointing the town accountant, and so that's why you're seeing that part of it.
Any comments, questions? No?
Then we are very lucky to have Lynn.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Passes five oh. Lynn, you're stuck with us.
Yep, a little primordial.
And then, we'll move on to, we're gonna disburse three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to provide grant to the North Andover Housing Authority for the design of the Fountain Drive. Laurie, anything?
Sure. I didn't, I didn't know if Mr. Valencourt was gonna say anything, because I'm not the chair anymore, so...
Well, I'm not the chair either.
I know. But you're more senior than I am, so...
The Housing Authority does a tremendous amount of work around town providing affordable housing, affordable housing options for seniors, for first-time home buyers, et cetera. So, this particular grant was approved at town meeting to do a study on Fountain Drive to expand the, the, the number of units at Fountain Drive. So, to take that empty lot that's at on Fountain Drive today and, you know, look into the potential of expanding Fountain Drive into that, that place. So, this is just an approval to disperse that money, to, to take that, just begin that project.
So, yeah, for the design.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Look forward to seeing that. That'll be a really great project. All right, so we did E, we're on to F. So, we've had a lot of requests for... Whoa, oh, sorry. I skipped, my bad.
That's okay.
All right, so we are going to ratify the contract between the town of North Andover and the nine-one-one communications.
You can run through that quickly if that works for you, Madam Chair. Okay, so, we have implementation of our COLA pattern, which is twenty-three, fiscal year twenty-three, one point five, fiscal year twenty-four, two percent, and fiscal year twenty-five, two percent. Feels weird talking about twenty twenty-five, feels very far away, doesn't it? No, it's not. We're adding Juneteenth to the list of paid holidays. As you know, we are increasing the clothing allowance to seven hundred and fifty dollars in fiscal year twenty-five. And we are again revising the salary structure to address the inequities that we have found with our comparable communities with this unit running less behind than most of our other units happily, but still needing to have that structure looked at. We're implementing a performance evaluation program. We're bringing equity back to their holiday pay, as we've done with the other units, increasing the vacation carryover to ten days and reinstating their attendance incentive program. We're also limiting the number of swaps allowed each year.
All right, any, do I have a motion?
I would move approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the town of North Andover and the communications officers for a term of July first, two thousand twenty-two, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, you guys have been busy getting all these contracts done. Yeah, we'll move on to item F, the naming policy for town building and assets. We've had a lot of requests recently for benches and plants and various things. So, we thought that maybe it was good to talk about a policy before the, especially before the Rexplex.
And the senior center, too. I think that I've heard, you know, rumblings about different rooms and whatnot. And I think it's important for us to have a, a process for things to be named after people or, and for the, the board to be able to control that process is important.
So, this is just a pass-through tonight, correct? And you think that this is just for discussion?
Yep, we don't have to take action on it tonight if, if we're not ready to take action on it. It's important for us to introduce it to the, to you and to the community. We can take it under advisement, put it on your next agenda, or take any action if you have comments now that you wanna, or changes you wanna see.
By putting this together, did, did we look at other communities as to what their best practices are and as well?
And that's why the, I think the, having the public comment period is important.
There's a big difference, though, between naming a bench and naming a building. So, it just seems to me that...
So, this wouldn't apply to benches. This, this policy, no...
Oh, I said there'd been a lot of requests for benches.
This policy only applies to donations that are worth over five hundred dollars. So, it wouldn't apply to benches, bricks, that's the way it's drafted right now. Anything that would be in memory of, under five hundred dollars, it would not be included. It's the big value item. So, for instance, you know, somebody wants to name the pickleball court, right? We wanna make sure that, that this doesn't happen, right? We wanna make sure there's a process for that to happen.
I agree.
It also, I think, sets expectations for folks, because the policy, well, we haven't had a policy, so there's been inconsistencies. So, I think, I think that helps, for sure. So, appreciate that.
We talked about having, that it would be posted, and then it's a fourteen-day waiting period so the public has a chance to come to our next meeting and...
Get out my question, is what triggers this? Is it, so let's say somebody says, hey, I wanna rename Town Hall to be such-and-such, you know, Stevens Town Hall or something. What is, what triggers this? Is this a request from the town to name a property? Or, you know, let's say there's something out there that somebody feels should be named after somebody. Can somebody initiate the process themselves?
Anybody can, says, anybody could submit it, a resident, a member of the Select Board, or a town manager in writing. And then, the Select Board would put it on their agenda and have a consultation. And then additionally, if there was any larger campaign, capital campaign, for instance, you know, making this up, but if, say, the senior center wanted to have groups, like they want a gold-level, silver-level sponsors for their new building, they would have to run that by you before they'd be able to do it. But it could come from, the way it's written right now, it could come from any resident, Select Board member, or any member of the staff.
The only thing that comes to mind is, there's a tendency, I always think of this in terms of like, when you rate all-time sports teams, and you tend to over-focus on most recent. And so, when we're thinking about naming things, especially for just kind of opening up now, there can be kind of a disproportionate representation of, of an era. So, I don't quite know how we factor that in, but I do think that's an, an important, because there are a finite number of assets, right? I mean, they'll grow a little bit over time, but they're a finite number. So, I think we just wanna be considerate of, of that. And I don't know what the mechanism would be, but I just wouldn't want us to be sitting here a year from now and kind of whip through, I don't know, fifty buildings and whatever, and we're all done.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't think the community would want that. My sense is that, I don't think they would. But we wanna protect against that, too, a little bit, right?
We wanna be careful that there's, that there's not a movement for someone who's just a really nice person. Everybody loves them. But it, to be named for a building, it's gotta be something so well above and beyond of just...
Well, building a field, I mean, whatever it is.
Field, whatever.
You wanna have, there, there needs to be a real good connection to that. And again, not just because it's convenient, I'd say it like that, but so...
So, you're talking about like a limit? Like you can only have one building?
Well, so, for instance, like the, the, we came up with the Hall of Fame, the Educator Hall of Fame, right? There's only a limited number of applications and inductees that were allowed every year, and that allowed the process to sort of mature itself. So, maybe that's a mechanism, that we think about, that sort of, that sort of thing? I don't know. Do you have any thoughts on that, Town Manager?
I think it makes perfect sense. I think, you know, it's not often that we see requests for naming things. We see the smaller things, the memorial benches, the podiums, we see those type of things. I think this comes up timely right now because we have new assets.
Yes.
And so, it, it's a new concern, and I think there's a, a caution to losing control of that process, and it's very easy to have that happen, especially when you have a lot of different committees and commissions involved. And so, you know, on top of this policy, there may, you may wanna have a consideration of what actually does get named. Because I have seen things get out of control, where people are naming literally every room or every fence or every, and so, you know, how do you avoid that from happening? And maybe, you know, something that you could think about on something like this is, you know, instead of taking action on it today, we could form a subcommittee who goes and works on it and then comes back.
It can be a very emotional process as well, you know, that it's a dear family member or... It's tough. And I think, I love the point that you brought up. I didn't even really think of that. You know, there's people who have come long before us that could be quite worthy of a building being named after them or whatever. You just don't wanna get caught up in present day. But I think extreme caution needs to be used for naming.
Agreed.
And it, yeah. I think that's, reflects my opinion, that we just have to be really sure that that's in the best interest of the town. And sometimes, you know, North Andover Town Hall is just perfect. It's very inclusive. As a senior center, it's very inclusive. So, that's, I just...
I think what we've done in the past, like when they, when they named the Ambrad Street School, I mean, there was, wasn't there like a contest or something?
Just to ask, do the schools have a policy? They do. Okay, but it's obviously different than what, okay. We can take a look at that.
Well, in drafting that, it was different policies from different, and one was the school, one was Andover, a couple other communities.
And we do have rooms now in different municipal buildings that are named after people. Right, and I don't know what process those have gone through in the past, but I'm assuming there isn't one. Right, so...
It just comes up.
There should be one. Yes, for consistency and...
Just so that there's a process that the public gets to be engaged in the process, instead of us just saying, you know, room one oh three is gonna be, you know, named after...
In a lot of ways, it makes it more accessible to people to be able to be part of that.
Right.
So, are we interested, instead of voting, in creating a subcommittee to go back and work on? A subcommittee will have to post their meeting and could do work on the policy together if they so chose.
Do we want a subcommittee, or does everybody just want like two weeks to like digest it and review it?
I think everybody tells... Yeah, let's...
Yeah, that makes sense. Maybe it just gives everybody a chance to read it. Do like a first read and a second read. We'll do, sounds good.
I think so. Right, we may, we may be able to tweak it. Or we, Laurie, it won't be...
All Laurie. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, on that same topic.
A different situation. So, we've been approached by former Deputy Fire Chief Ed Morgan. And back in 2003, there was an initiative to name the pond behind 228 Dale Street as Kelly's Pond, which was in memory of Kelly Long, who was a senior water analyst for the town who passed away after an illness. Based on the emails that we have found in the conversations that people remember, there appears to have been a consensus at that time. There was even a bench installed at the pond with her name on it, you know, naming the pond. But we never could actually find any action by the select board. So, Deputy Chief Morgan got in touch with Scott Nuzbaum, and Scott Nuzbaum got in touch with me, and then we all started talking about this, and they brought forward the request to rededicate it since it doesn't seem like it ever actually was finalized.
Well, that's the story behind the story.
Isn't that interesting? I know. And we did a lot of digging down here in our files and all, as well as the water department. And while there is our memory of it, nobody can ever find any of the actual...
But you said it was discussed at a meeting, right?
There was emails about it. I couldn't find any minutes from anything, but certainly was conversation. And it seems like it was something that everyone thought had happened, especially after they installed the bench. But we couldn't find anything on it. It is, so, let me see if I can pull it up. It is town property. It's the old town farm. Right near Dale Street Soccer Field.
That's what I thought.
Okay. Up behind that. I can pull it up if you want to see it.
Is it the circle? No. No, that's, oh, that's the wrong thing. Oh, it's back there. Gotcha. In the woods. So, 228, this is Glenwood Sparkle right here. This is Bear Hill Road. 228 is a great...
Hill Road. Back here where this water kind of forms back here. It's actually a little drier now that we've removed Dave Rand's... Beaver dams, yeah. Which is why it doesn't look as wet as it was. It was much, actually much wetter, but that's where it is. There's already a bench, yes. I don't, I don't believe it had a name prior to.
Just a wet spot.
It was just a wet spot, yes.
Any other questions? Comments? I have a motion. And a second. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Kelly's Pond.
It's always nice to complete the circle, so, thank you.
Next, we have a request of the kind Senior Care to use the town comment on June 17th from 2:00 to 5:00 for an employee gathering. Don't think we have anybody here, but everything's in order.
If we have no other conflicting events on that day?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. It was also rescheduled. I think we already approved it once. All right, let's see. We'll move on to our consent items. We're accepting a donation for 20 physicals to the youth center from Convenient MD Urgent Care. And we're also accepting a donation from Lowell 5 in the amount of $2,500 for the fireworks. So, thank you to both businesses for that. Those are wonderful donations.
Both businesses have been very generous to the town with different... Thank you to both of them.
You know, physicals are significantly more involved and complex these days because you're taking into account head trauma. There's a lot, a lot more that goes into these. And for some of the folks that get this, this is really kind of their only chance to get a checkup, as it were. So, you know, this really suits, it really hits a need that is invisible to, I think, a lot of people in the community. So, it has a value much higher than that in terms of the health.
I would move with the select board to accept all consent items.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Next, we'll move on to our open session meeting minutes of May 23rd, 2022. Does anybody have any comments or adjustments or anything to that? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Those are approved. We don't have any old business. Do we have anything for the town manager report?
I was just going to let you know that we did receive the Community Compact Municipal Fiber Grant, and that fiber is actually going to be used to make the connections with the senior center. So, we're very excited about that, and so, I'm very thankful to our state reps and senators, as well as John, for all the great work he did on that. I'm trying to remember how much it is, but, no, I already signed the contract. But we're very excited to see that coming forward, and it's going to make a big difference. $15,561, but it's going to make a big difference in us being able to get that project done on time and within budget. So, kudos to all of them. Excellent. And that's it. Thank you.
Any select board comments, updates? Anybody require?
We have some representation here at the table today, but congratulations and job well done to all of them.
It was cold, but it was...
Well, I was unable to attend. I know we have the poetry celebration, right?
We had our town manager and our assistant superintendent who were finalists.
Yes.
We had to rhyme off, me and Jim.
You did?
Well, no. We both read our poems. And they were such impressive little kids. My kids came with me, and the kids' poems were so cute and good. It was nice to see them, so.
So, are you going to send us a copy of your poem?
I can send you a copy of it. Of course I will, yes. So, I'm sure it'll be on Cam. But yes, I will of course send it to you, but it was nice. We had a good time, and it was a beautiful day, so.
One more note of appreciation to all of the people who made the SOS overnight party for the graduates happen. It is an enormous feat and so appreciated, and it's, you know, seems to be, as usual, the same people every year, year after year, and they just don't quit. They just keep going. So, we are very appreciative that all of our students have that experience. If anybody wants to volunteer, they're always looking for more people for next year, starting now. Well, I mean, we do set up and clean up because, but yes, we do not force our children to hang out with us all night.
Does the farmers' market start this week? The farmers' market, is it next week?
No, the 19th.
The 19th.
19th. We begin the farmers' market June 19th. We also will, would take any volunteers for that, so you can head to our website. There's tons of information there, so, things are really very busy right now.
So, for all the people who donated the use of their banner to the town for the 375th celebration, I'm getting, I'm getting to all of you. There's like over 125 that need to be given back to the people who pledge them. One was tonight, so just... So, be it known that they will be on their way, so.
So, I just wanted to say thank you to the Patriotic Observance Committee for the Memorial Day services that they put on. It was a lovely parade and services, and the Boy Scouts were there and...
The singers.
The singers, yes. It was a great, it was a beautiful day.
It was a beautiful day. It's a great group. They take it very seriously.
But I actually thought we had met since then.
It's been a long week.
It's been a lot of events going on.
And I know a couple of people who have asked, but the fireworks are on July 3rd.
Yes.
So, so July...
And they're supposed to be extra special.
Extra special fireworks this year, in case you're making plans. And then the roost is on the 4th.
Same spot.
At the middle school.
At the middle school, yep.
Perfect. And then the race and the festivities are on the 4th.
Yep. I think, I think the discussion is, you know, bring, bring a picnic.
Excellent. All right. So, our next meeting is June 27th, and with that, I'll take a motion for adjournment. A motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.